Council members have any questions, but just kind of walk through it. The more significant items and then if council has any specific questions, let's do that. But go ahead and get started on that if you would, and thank you.
So in May 27th, first reading, our general fund revenue was eighteen million, twenty-eight thousand dollars. This memo outlines some reductions in real property tax. There's a one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollar reduction due to changes between pre BOE and post BOE. In personal property tax, we're reducing two thousand seventeen dollars again due to the changes between pre BOE and post BOE. Sales tax is reducing one million, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We're now projecting a six percent sales tax starting at January one twenty-six instead of a seven percent sales tax that was previous, starting December one twenty-five. And the sales tax other is decreasing one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and remote seller sales tax is increasing fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Some small changes in permits, licensing fees for fifteen hundred dollar reduction or addition, sorry. And we have a fund balance appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. This is nine hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars worth of reductions, taking us to seventeen million, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars new revenue.
Can I ask a question maybe?
Yes.
We still have under this version, we still have the half million dollars coming out of the school bond fund, correct?
Correct.
So basically at this iteration of this, we've got seven hundred and fifty thousand spending out of savings from city accounts, correct? Between the five hundred thousand in the school fund and the two hundred thousand, yes. Thank you.
Okay, in expense, we have reductions in insurance. We received rates from Alaska Public Works Alliance in vehicle insurance, a reduction of eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. In building insurance, a reduction of eight hundred and fourteen dollars. In liability, a reduction of fifty-five thousand, ninety-four dollars. And in workers' comp, a reduction of forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. This is about the nine percent decrease from last year's bill. In the administration, we have a reduction in labor and benefits for thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. An employee who requested a reduction in hours from forty hours to twenty-eight hours per week. We made reductions in travel and training and admin, reducing two thousand dollars. In finance, reducing eighteen hundred dollars and HR, reducing five hundred dollars. And in sponsorships, donations and contributions, decreasing five hundred dollars. In IP professional service, a reduction of three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. I think recently you finalized the AngelCom contract and the original budget was just showing a ten percent increase while we waited for the bids to finalize. So this is just a true up. In machinery and equipment, I reduced contingency by twenty-five hundred dollars. In the city clerks' travel and training, a reduction of two thousand dollars. In police investigations, a reduction of one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to make it more similar to the F-25 original budget. In planning and engineering, a reduction of five thousand dollars in engineering services. Ten thousand dollars in professional services, which is a reduction of five thousand for the grant services and a reduction of five thousand to the contractual planner. Remove the twenty-five hundred dollars of travel and training, there's no planned travel in an F-26. And remove the five thousand abatement budget. In public works growth, we reduced operating supplies by five hundred dollars. In the pool, we reduced operating supplies by four hundred and fifty dollars. In museum salary and benefits, a reduction of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We removed the part-time museum assistants, but increased hours for the museum aid. In library, a reduction of two hundred and fifty dollars for advertising. A reduction of two thousand for travel and training. One hundred dollar reduction for audiovisual materials and a three hundred dollar reduction to operating supplies. In non-departmental, a two thousand dollar reduction for unemployment, just making this more in line with what we saw in F-25. A seven hundred thousand reduction to the school appropriation based on the resolution that was passed at the last meeting. And then we added funding for the Noam Preschool Association at thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars and Nest for seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. And we reduced this transfer out to replenish vehicle equipment fund by fifty thousand. We still have a contribution of a hundred thousand. And then in the last draft, there was a fifty-one thousand dollar contribution to fund balance and that has been removed. So again, a total of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in reductions.
I have a couple of questions for you, Nikki. The grant services, to reduce grant services to twenty-five thousand, does that mean that we still have a grant? We're contracting for, what does that mean? Are we contracting for a grant writer?
We're actually going to RFP and hire a company that does that. They do the research and as I've talked to from the schools, different groups. I've talked to a couple of people this week about utilizing the service where it does foundations, federal, state. It does all the research for you and they do grant writing if needed. And in a lot of the grants, you get some administrative money which will help pay for this service. And I've used several of them and usually very productive, they've done all of these grants before. So they know what to say, kind of the hot words or hot buttons to put in there. So I feel very good about that as far as and being able to share with some of our organizations to use that service that are right now having to do their own searches.
No, but this would be a, this would be a new contract, right?
It's, yes.
Right?
Yeah, instead of a person, we're, you know, going to hire, do it through. And I'd like to do a two-year and then we can come back and look at, you know, how successful it was. Is it something we want to continue? Obviously, we'll look at it end of the year. But, you know, particularly over a two-year period, we should see our results.
And then the next question I had was, reduce, no planned travel for FY-26. Does that mean that the planner, contract planner is not going to make any trips to Noam for FY-26?
No, that's the travel for the building inspector.
Okay, the building inspector, okay. Not, not, why not traveling out of town?
Not.
And then also removing the abatement budget, what is that?
You want to, Dan, do you want to?
Abatement budget would be if there was parcels to abate and it would pay for the remediation for the abatement of those properties.
Okay, those are for doing, for the city actually doing the abatement work?
Yeah, it's not a large budget and so like, even if we had a list, we'd have to pick from the list because there's not enough funds to actually fund all of the abatement on the abatement list to begin with. It'd get ate up pretty quick.
I watched the meeting last night for a little bit online and I saw that abatement came up as one of the discussions about plans to circle back on abatement, is that?
That's our, yes, and it's not even a plan, we have to do that because, you know, we obviously get neighbor to neighbor complaints, but it is rampant in the city as far as, and now it's become safety issues. You know, and I see kids out in some of these areas where it's dangerous. You know, even to a point of hazardous chemicals that we're seeing. But there are some things we're going to have to do with our code, some of our policies, so we can strengthen those. But that's part of the list I'll be bringing to you in July to look at and then help me prioritize these projects over the next two years.
So when somebody ends up on the abatement list and they get all the notices and they go through all the normal procedures?
Yep.
And eventually gets to the point where it has to be abated, doesn't that person then, that owner end up paying for that abatement?
I know how I've done it in the past, but Dan, describe how it's done here. We've not, you've not done one since you've been here, I've never done one, yeah.
Maybe we can talk to Kenny about that after a while.
I just saw it was taken out, but I heard you talked about wanting to increase abatement activity.
That's what people are screaming over that, wanting that to happen. But it's called neighbor to neighbor, so the whole thing of is make sure your, you know, your backyard and side yard is clean too because then you may be on the list. But in the past, and that's what I want to talk to the lawyers about, we've actually put liens on properties. And that usually gets attention, but it usually helps us recoup. Now, some have just turned the property over and that's fine too. But we've, these codes, policies and local laws, we're going to be asking for changes this year so we can put some teeth in it, as you said, a little while ago.
So we have quite a few folks here tonight. Maybe we can open it up to get comments from the people who came here to maybe give comments or just listen in. But if you have comments that you'd like to make about the budget or suggestions or anything, now's the time to do that. Come on up, one at a time.
Okay, Tim Hughes, Noam Chamber of Commerce. So we're, we're interested in helping to shave a little bit of money off of the budget. Previously, our contract had been two hundred thousand. We saw that it was cut to a hundred thousand. Chantel and I had a meeting with Lee and proposed some, some changes in, in operating that we're still discussing, that, that we think that we could do okay, a good job in advancing things at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. What the changes that would be seen would be that we would only be, have the visitor center open seasonally. And then during the season that it was open, we would only be open on weekdays except for boat days and special events that may occur on the weekends. And so that's pretty much the bulk of the changes. And throughout the, throughout the year, we would still be having an active director of the visitor center. That would be looking after the building, taking care of it, making sure that everything was still nominal there. And also pursuing the normal traffic that we have with questions from visitors throughout the year as a result of the, the website that is fairly attractive. And of course, we would be also maintaining the webcam and our internet presence so that, as long as we have internet, which we do, we have a redundant now with the Starlink system as well as Rog password to make sure that the camera stays up. Anyway, that's kind of, of our plan and we're hoping that the hundred and fifty thousand dollar level will be, will be funded by you guys. So that's.
I do want to say we had a good meeting yesterday because the contract, I have to get a contract right with them. It's due or times out the end of June. So Chantel did a good job bringing me some bullet points to put in the contract. So that is really helpful to look at, okay, what does it cost? What, just like we do with our departments, you know? And we want with visitor center to, it's a department. Even though, you know, we're cousins, we may not be brother and sister, we're cousins. But we, I appreciated it yesterday and that's given me a lot of ability to make some changes on the, we've got, I don't know how old that contract is. I'm so busy on the, it's how long we have that contract, Chantel, with the chamber?
Ten years.
So it's kind of time for an update. But so, you know, some of it is making sure the chamber and then with Chantel. So we, we know what the expectations are from each other. And that was, so I thought that was very good yesterday. And then reading through them, you know, that's going to help me get this together. So I promised them by mid next week, they'd have a draft and then I'll get that to you. And I appreciate them working with us very much.
Is that funding amount seem reasonable to city administration?
I'm looking at it, I think probably, but I don't want to give you definitive. I just want to go through because I do already have a couple of questions. I know they're minor questions, but then we'll get together next week and go over them. But I just want to make sure we're covered, they're covered. Can we do what we said we're going to do for each other? So, yeah, and I appreciate it yesterday very much.
Yeah, likewise. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for having me. Kimberly Bishop, introduced myself before. I'm executive director for Noam Community Center. I'm going to read off three names for you. Lyle O'Conello, Marissa Slocum, Roberta Tokina. These are names of some of the individuals whose deaths have resulted indirectly from lack of shelter. When Lyle froze to death in two thousand and nine, that was the reason that Noam Emergency Shelter was founded. When you write off Nest or even reduce funding from your budget, you're telling the community that these deaths didn't matter. That the unhoused individuals currently facing trauma, injustices and life challenges don't matter. At the mission of Noam Community Center to enhance the quality of life for the people of the Bering Straits region, does it matter? That the most vulnerable population doesn't deserve to have basic human needs met. When I went to the shelter the first week it opened this past season and spoke with one of the individuals, she said, "I'm angry that my friend died. Why was the shelter not open?" It deeply pained me that these deaths could have been prevented if we had opened sooner. In response, we have plans to open our shelter next season earlier and for longer. But we can't do that if we don't have the funding. Costs about twenty-five thousand dollars per month to operate Nest. We manage over ten community funders and two grants to cover expenses. This is truly a collaborative effort that takes all of us. I understand that Nest has a lot of bias and stigma. I hear the rumors, the complaints and opinions of Nest. I know that police and ambulance calls still get, services still get called. But what if Nest was not provided anymore? How many more complaints would there be? How many more police and ambulance calls would there be? And does any of that really matter when the true purpose of Nest is to prevent people from freezing to death? Additionally, Nest isn't the end game, but a pathway to healing for many. Providing resources to those in desperate need so they can get their feet back on the ground when they're ready and become the people they want to be. Nest is an essential service in our community. And as you may know and should know, Noam Community Center is more than just Nest. It's the Noam Soup Bank, X Y Z Senior Center, Family Services, Youth Programming. We impact people at all stages of life to provide needed services. We have a big plate and we can't hold it completely on our own. We especially cannot hold it without the support of our own city. You've heard before, the youth are the future of Noam. Noam Community Center has multiple programs to support our children and family, including Boys and Girls Club, Noam Youth Court, Noam Children's Home and Camp Grave, which is a summer camp that focuses on healthy choices. By taking care of youth in our region, providing a healthy, safe environment and constructive educational activities, we are making that investment in the future. A future where trauma, abuse, suicide and incarceration is reduced and instead is providing building and growing to be what Noam is always meant to be, the community. The city has an obligation to care for our community, to address social issues and provide essential services. I'm calling on you to rethink your budget and to fully fund Noam Community Center's program. Please invest in our youth, elders, families and those in need. Please make the choice to save lives. Thank you.
I do want to, we had a meeting, let's see, time goes by, yesterday?
What's that?
Day before yesterday when you and I met?
Yeah.
I do, I'm going to give the gold star to this organization for their ability and their success in getting grants on all levels. That's impressive and to maintain them says that they run good programs. So I was, we had a very good conversation also about our supporting them and being able to look for additional grants and funding. But I can say that from a accounting standpoint and their ability to raise revenue, I give them the gold star. I mean, you guys, you do a lot with, not a lot, but I was, I was very impressed by my presentation.
Would you consider Nest, Noam Community Centers, like highest priority to fund?
I think they're all priorities. But yes, of.
Because it looks like last year we funded Nest at, what was it?
Thirty-five thousand.
And then there was another ten thousand?
Twenty thousand for youth programming.
Twenty thousand?
Yes.
And then our senior center as well.
And I can understand your reluctance.
Yes, I think with our youth programming, there are, we'll have to, we can create other strategies for addressing some of those, even if we do partial funding. We would be grateful what we can receive as far as Nest goes, if we're trying to expand our programming to include longer shelter services. And we're also doing the same this summer, we're, we created an emergency plan for inclement weather so we can do temporary opening. We are going to need more funding for that, so I would say that is a priority as well. And then the senior center, I didn't really mention much about that, but the city has always provided the utilities and space over there. I'm not sure that I saw that in the budget.
Nikki, we've still included that, didn't we not?
Or which program?
Or Community Center?
Senior Center.
Senior Center.
The senior center is still in the budget.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And that we're very grateful for. We appreciate that.
Appreciate your answer.
Can I ask you a question? What what's your relationship with Norton Sound Hospital and Health Corporation? Do they provide funds for youth programs as well?
Yes. So of the 10 funders, Norton Sound is our biggest funder for Nest. And we tap all the shoulders in the community for many of our programs. We have over nine regular programs. And so, yes, we we do get a lot of collaborative support.
Since we seem to have quite a few comments regarding the non-departmental type things, would it be possible to pull up what were our non-departmental budget is? I know we have a number on here, but just to get an idea, because I didn't realize X Y Z is still in there, not in there.
It was in the May 27.
Yeah. Just for refresh our memory.
Drew McCann, a couple of different things to to chat about. One community center, just because it was just discussed on the treasurer for the community center. I think it's great to see X Y Z left alone. And I know it probably predates all of us and our involvement with the city, but I think this, a lot of the building that we're sitting in now and the funds to build it was kind of based on having that X Y Z next door. So just as a little reminder to this building that we're all in, a lot of the funding for that was because there was going to be a senior center in the building. From also on the community center side with Nest, you know, I'm, I'm one of those that have lived right on the street with Nest with my kids and, you know, now I don't. And so, you know, I think I've been on that bias of both sides as well. But at the end of the day, it it depends on if you have a true heart in your, in your chest. And and at the end of the day, we we need to care for each other. And especially those that may not be directly cared for very well from the city directly. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the, while the community center and I don't think the preschool does either, but a lot of these organizations sell pool tabs and you know how those work with the tax on the gross sales that Noam Juno do only in the state of Alaska. So we're taking a lot of money from the nonprofits in form of sales tax, but also reducing the contributions that we're providing to those nonprofits in the budget. What I would like to see is just more tightening of the actual cities operating versus the contributions that are going to these entities that really need the funds more than the city does for providing the services that they provide, that the city doesn't. Just to really quickly touch on the preschool as well. You talked about a little bit, Lee, about all the different grants that places get like community center and preschool and others. The city is a lot of times the only unrestricted fund that some of these places get. And so, you know, there was some grants that we didn't get at the community center because for Nest specifically, because they were paying operating expenses. And some of those granters don't provide funds for operating expenses. Some of those granters are right here in the city too. And, you know, it's just not something that they provide those those funds for. So the city contributions allow a lot of these organizations to have some flexibility when, yeah, they do have a lot of different grants. But those grants are very, very specific to how they can be used or, and some organizations do it much better than others in how they direct their their administrative costs or other costs into those grants and some don't. And so to quickly within, you know, a year or two, go from a full expectation and what we have in the budget to zero or to half just seems a lot more difficult for those organizations that have used that fund, that funding from the city for whatever purposes that all these others are very strict. It it could potentially have impact on those grant funds too, because if they can't provide matching funds or can't provide certain areas of their operating, then how are they going to be able to fulfill the requirements of the grants that they're getting other funds for? My kids both went to preschool here, one, two years and one, one year, because he's a little bit of a hellion, but he had fun and
Cover your ears.
Yeah. And came out the other side, you know, and and they both really got a lot of really valuable interplay and just personal skills that you don't get at home all the time. If you don't have a large family that they're all interacting with. So that was just my two cents for preschool and for community center.
Hi, I'm Jessica Laverne with the community center. I just want to say thank you first for the work you're doing. I don't envy any of you on these decisions you have to make because all of these programs in our community are super important. So thank you. But speaking on behalf of the community center and starting with the nest, as Kimberly so eloquently said, these are our most vulnerable citizens and we know them, we see them, the hospital sees them. And without a place for them to go, then they are out on the streets. And when the weather is bad, which is most of the time here, unfortunately, it's it's deadly. And so we have been working to try to keep the nests open during storms, which sometimes are in the summer or the fall, and to open it earlier. I don't work for the hospital, but I know a lot of people who do. And I get asked a lot. Can you open earlier? Because they are in the ER, which is, I think, again, I'm not a hospital representative, but the hospital does support the nest because they they know that without another place for them to go, they see them in the ER and you know, they're trying to also take care of them, but a lot of times they don't have a medical need to be there. And so it's kind of hard to maintain them there. And so having a place that's safe and warm for them to go during weather is really important. So again, like Kimberly said, we we've got to take care of our most vulnerable people. And, you know, that shows what our community is made of. Our elders are also our vulnerable and our important citizens, our important people in our communities. And X Y Z gives them a place to gather, it feeds them, it brings food to people who can't leave their house. And then our kids are also the other, the group there. So you have our elders, our kids, and our people who are unhoused or often unhoused. And so just as you're thinking about the hard decision of where all the money goes in tough times, just keeping in mind again, like some of these, you know, cuts will really impact people's lives in dramatic ways. So, thank you.
Another quick question for Nikki. In the revenues, where where is NSCDC funding? What line item is that coming?
It's from budget 13 special revenue and we still have not allocated the 2024 NSCDC funds of 150,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, thank you to everybody here. I am Rebecca Loos, director of the Noam preschool for the last two years. And then before that, I was a parent and board member since 2017. And want to share our gratitude for your support over the last several years, including the preschool and the city budget. And grateful for the allotment that you are introducing for this updated budget. I did come here to request the same amount as previous years. Your support for FY25 for our small budget was crucial in helping us provide accessible early childhood education in Noam. And accessibility is our core part of our mission. So as we navigate the challenges of sustaining and quality, accessible preschool education, we were proactive. We did increase our tuition and material fee for next year. But we are still falling short. I did share with you an impact summary. I did update it. If you guys wanted to look at our income and expenditures, wanted to share that with city council members. Awesome. Thank you. So as I said, our increase in tuition and materials fee isn't quite bridging that gap that we need. It would be great to see the increase of support to match that, what we are in need of for next year. I do want to bring up the topic again of increasing taxes on tobacco and alcohol to support not only our preschool, but essential community services across the board. And as Drew was saying, we are a licensed gaming permit holder. And we do see potential in expanding our pool tab activities to support future operating expenses. So adjusting local tax policies to reduce or eliminate nonprofit gaming revenues would directly help enhance our capacity to serve families in Noam. We believe that every child deserves the chance to start their education and nurturing, engaging, and community-focused classroom with your continued partnership. We can keep our doors open and serve more children in the coming year. And we're happy to meet, you're welcome to come over and check out the preschool. We are at a session for the summer. But again, we're really grateful for your support and including us in the budget for next year. Thank you.
Just curious, if we increase sales taxes to 6%, 1% or 2%, how does that impact nonprofits that, you know, generate revenues from gaming? Is that going to reduce the nonprofits' take proportionally?
Yes.
Like every other dollar?
Directly, yeah. Directly, a direct, a direct effect on the amount that
So every hundred dollars that the city gains from the increased sales tax will result in a hundred less dollars for the nonprofits?
Basically, yeah.
Because I've heard that point raised several times since we talked about an increased sales tax.
Yeah. Anybody else would like to talk about the budget tonight? So when are we going to talk about the special revenue fund? Can you talk about it now?
I mean, do you
No, so we're, no, we've been talking about the general fund, basically, right?
Yeah.
And and I understand that, like, for instance, NSCDC gives a contribution to the city every year. And that falls into a different fund. I don't know that we've talked about that fund yet. Maybe or maybe we have, but I don't remember it, but
Do you want to go over those?
Yeah, there was a presentation in the previous packet. I think we just didn't get to it.
I think that might have been the night, the day that we were going to talk about the budget. We had the school staff, or the city staff come to the meeting and
Yeah, we ran out of time.
Right, yeah, we didn't, we didn't look up to that.
Yep.
So we can talk about that now or?
I think it'd be a good time to discuss that.
You got to be careful because I was just going to ask a couple of questions on the non-departmental.
Go ahead.
So just, I'll put Lee on the spot here a little bit. Just looking at the changes from May 27 budget to now. Well, actually, I'll different from the FY25 budget. It appears that I'm just going to go line by line. This is on page 31 of the, I think it was the May 27. Notwithstanding the school contribution, which obviously that's the line share. So it appears that we have kept 25,000 in contributions to the Iditarod Trail Committee. I just want to make sure I understand it. We have, but we have completely cut out the Noam Preschool Association for 65,000. We've completely removed the 35,000 in Nest. We've kept 5,000 for fireworks. We've kept 15,000 or reduced to 12,500, so shaved 2,500 off of the Iron Dog sponsorship. And we've kept 3,000 in the LEPC. That's the emergency. But we have cut out quite a few entities, nonprofits that provide services, like we've cut out 10,000 in Noam Winter Sports. I think they do the hockey, the hockey green?
Yes.
We've cut out the 20,000 from Noam Community Center, talked about earlier. We've cut out 10,000 from Checkpoint Youth Center. We've reduced 30,000 as a line item contribution for Noam Public Schools. Reduced 3,000 from PAWS of Noam. And 3,000 in the Nordic Ski Program. I guess my question is, it appears that we've we've maintained in this non-departmental budget, these contributions to outside entities like Iditarod, like Iron Dog. But we've completely removed local organizations like Noam Preschool, Nest. Just trying to understand the thought process.
Well, I have to go back.
And and the Noam Visitor Center, Noam Community Center, 500,000.
Yeah, well, I hate to do this, but someone's done 46 days, but obviously those cuts were made before I got here. So now I'm having to learn why they were cut, why they're so you know, so I'll ask for Dan's help on that because I was not part of that original development of budget. But obviously, we've been changing it since then and asking a lot of questions about about why. So I don't want to speak for Dan or Nikki, you know, I just don't think that's appropriate, but anything that you guys want, you know, like I said, put some money on the spot.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I'm just trying to, if there was a thought process behind it.
Yeah.
And it sounds like these were decisions made quite a while ago.
Yeah, in that original, the recommendation that came forth or the proposed.
Sure.
But, you know, obviously, some of these we have put some money back in those, some at 50% additional. And I will tell you, part of our going to, where my thought was, going to the seven was going to enable me to put these things back in place as, you know, I mean, they've got, you know, Black Nest, absolutely, live down the street. You know, they're great programs. So are those priorities to the board? Are those priorities to the community? And right now, I can't speak to it until I really sit down with you guys and go over progress and also with the community. So I'm, I'm a little bit blind on them, but that's why I've been having meetings to go, tell me exactly what you do. What kind of revenue are you raising on your own? If you're not, could we do these things? Can I do something kind? You know? So it's a combination of things, but I don't know if Dan or Nikki, if you guys want to talk about it again, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but thought process, you know, with me and with, you know, the departments and that type thing. Are you? Dan or Nikki?
I recall, I recall that we discussed the cuts departments had made and that we were having trouble funding departments and priority services. We needed to look at the non-departmental with a closer look. And so they were refused or removed. But we also knew we had funding through NSCDC, which I think Councilman Johnson's kind of pushing towards, if that's where the council wanted to go again to fund those programs.
That's a fair answer. I guess this is a general statement. If we're going to, if we're going to start, you know, making some major reductions in this non-departmental fund, that we would start with the outside organizations first, if there's going to be any cuts made. fund, that we would start with the outside organizations first, if there's going to be any cuts made. And if we're, if there's going to be some reductions in some of these local organizations that provide services on the ground here in Gnome, that we look at reducing those last. That's just sort of as a general principle, I guess, so.
Okay. Understood. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the general budget? We take a look at that NSDC, or that special revenue fund again and see what we did talk about yet. What was, what is it budgeted for? I know at one time it was, we used to have nonprofits provide applications to the city to say what they're looking for. And then we divide up that fund according to the number of applications. And then we changed that when we needed to do major upgrades at the pool, which was part of, part of the original NSCDC thought process, I think, was going into the pool for life saving and water saving things. And so we switched that funding over there and said, well, we don't want to leave out nonprofits altogether because we provide a lot of services. So we moved them into non-departmental to fund them and moved the NSCDC money over mainly to the pool or strictly to the pool, I think. And, and so it'd be good to see what that budget or what the proposed budget is for that. Cause I don't remember, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah.
If we could take a look at that again and.
I do want to comment on something that, you know, to go back when I had done foundations, nonprofits, outside agencies in the past, I have gone through the application process. Not only it's what have you done, you know, having their audits and making sure, because it's public money and it has to be managed in a certain way and only spent in certain ways. But to go through this coming year, and I know this is this coming year, but an application process. And typically I set money aside. It was based on our strategic plan that we're looking at this fall so we can help you get prioritized. But we've put so much money in there and that's how much money we have for outside agencies. And they apply for it. So it was somewhat competitive, just as they have to compete for other foundations and things now. So, but in the meantime, where Nikki, do you want to comment on those funds? Anything you can add?
And so we committed our 2023 funds to the recreation center saunas and the locker room project. But we never allocated those 2024 funds, which are $150,000 and could be done similarly to the past where folks like Councilman Johnson says submitted applications. It's just for NSCDC, we need to hold a public meeting and make sure it's their opportunity open to the community. If we're going to go towards community funding, you know, individual entities.
What was in the proposed budget this year for the 24? What's in the proposed budget?
So they always run a year behind. So we'll get the 2025 funding in November. So we're just playing catch up still with the 20, we received the 2024 notice in November of 24 for the 150,000. Is that what you're asking?
And we haven't spent that money or we haven't allocated that money?
Correct. We haven't spent it. It hasn't been allocated. We have no projects assigned to it.
Can we just assign it to NEST and Community Center and the preschool and not do the public?
Exactly. Yeah, I would like a resolution.
I, I think that's one reason why we went, one of another reasons that Nikki corrected, correct me while we went to the non-departmental funding is because of restrictions that NSCDC puts on the funds.
Of having to hold a public meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, maybe we could look at is if there's somewhere within the city budget that we can allocate that 152.
Right.
And, and then we move around some more into non-departmental.
I think we would have known about this already. So we have basically FY24 NSCDC funds of 150,000 basically sitting in a savings account. It hasn't been allocated, right?
Correct.
You're shaking.
We haven't, we haven't received those funds yet. It's a reimbursable program. Do you want me to review the guidelines?
For FY24?
Yes, sure.
Well, because we have to decide through a public process what we're going to use those funds for and communicate that back to NSCDC.
I believe this is recorded back, Nikki, isn't that correct?
Is that how that works?
So let me just tell you what their guidelines are. Does any of them must go through a public process at the municipal level to determine the highest priorities and best use for these funds? The public process can be a regularly scheduled or a special city council meeting or a special community meeting to address the best use of the CBS funds. And then the city must report those funds through a letter, detailed budget, and city council meeting minutes from a session to show that they are approved. And then we turn it in our expenses and they are reimbursed.
So we can use those funds for the FY26 operating budget?
I would say yes. We just make sure we meet those guidelines and we meet guidelines.
We can do in the future.
And that with these organizations, you'd be pretty darn.
But we could allocate that, assuming that we will go through that approval process or reimbursement process in the future. That kind of changes things a little bit.
Yeah.
Good thinking, Mark.
We said, we left it creative.
Thank you. So if we were to add that back in to the, if we were to add that 150,000 to the non-departmental, we could restore, again, as long as everybody's in agreement, 65,000 for the Gnome Preschool. Full funding. 35,000. My reading glasses here, but for NEST.
So you won't, you won't allocate it in non-departmental anymore. It is part of a special revenue fund. It has its own line item.
Okay, so we can.
Does it, does it, is it required to be part of special revenue fund because of the type of funds it is?
Yes, because it has restrictions and rules that we have to follow.
So we could theoretically, you know, fund half from one fund and the other half from the other fund?
Yeah, because some of them we have put back in at 50%. So we also be able to figure that out, how we would do it.
Right. So from that 150,000, we could restore full funding to NEST, Gnome Preschool and the visitor center up to 150,000.
Yeah, over 50,000.
That's a rough 150,000. 30,000, not, yeah, we still have another 20,000.
The original last of the community center was 55, not 35. It was 35 and 20.
Okay.
That's true. And Kimberly can correct me if I'm wrong. The original last was 55, right?
For.
Combined funding.
Combined, there you go.
What do you guys think?
So you'll still have 10,000 for Normaler Sports Association.
Still negotiating. I mean, is that a reasonable? What's that?
Yes.
Without taking a straw poll.
Don't do that.
We don't have no people here.
But that's, yes.
Does that work for you guys? And we can see those, and we can see those changes in Mondays?
Yeah, we can.
Budget?
Yes. Yes.
Another meeting.
Is that? No more meetings. I think we've got the solution right here. What are we missing? Are we missing anything?
I like it.
I guess our, oh, I have a question though. Just it's sort of a bigger picture.
Sure.
So if we use those funds that we just discussed, we can restore full funding to those three entities. Still have a balanced budget. But we're getting a balanced budget by drawing 750,000 out of city savings, reducing Gnome Public Schools by 700,000 from historical funding. And 6% sales tax. And if approved in October, we'll start January 1st.
We're trying to get it faster, but.
If that's approved, what would that look like in FY27, the following year? Because the increased sales tax, we're only getting basically six months of the 6% sales tax. So in FY27, we're going to be still in the hole? Because we'll increase our sales tax, we'll increase our sales tax revenue by another roughly 700,000 by having 12 months. Go ahead, Nikki.
Go ahead.
The general, the general sales tax would be about 1.3 million. And the remote seller sales tax could potentially be another 140,000.
And that's it. I want, if I can bring this up. When you look at these outside or internet sales taxes, you know, remote sales. What's interesting about those, I know you, this is a very general thing, but it's interesting to look at how you make assumptions on those. You know, because let's say I, I need, you know, 80 rolls of toilet paper. So instead of buying them here at one of the stores, I order them. So we know that the sales tax from those stores from that item falls off. But on the other side, and this is no hit to a retailer, if they have the product, let's say it's $2 cheaper, whatever, free shipping, then, you know, and, and it is cheaper. Then we do see some decrease in sales tax on certain products and things that are shipped. Depends if you're doing bigger, but you see what I'm saying? It's kind of a conundrum of how do you? And it's hard. I mean, Nikki and Dan and I have struggled over that, how, you know, what assumptions. But I've been with this on this remote sales tax for years when it first got started. And it's like it has, it will go up, level off, drop a little bit, come back up. But it's hard to know what the workings and what they base it on. It is very difficult to get that. And, and we're trying to get a handle, but even when I've talked to the league of municipalities, they're like, well, we've had this phone call from everyone and we don't know. I mean, so they struggle with it. So you can look at the history, but it, it concerns me if I'm saying, okay, this is going up. What will be the impact on the local sales tax? I really don't know. You know, right now, it's just something to think about. And when we're doing the calculations, and that's always concerning, I know to Nikki, but it is to Dan and I in making some of these assumptions and estimates, you know. So I try to be on the revenues pretty conservative, you know. Could they be higher on the revenues? I mean, I looked today, absolutely, you know, a couple of hundred thousand here, 300 there, sure. But I don't want to overstate it and get in the end of the year and go, oh, you know, we overstated the revenues. You see what I'm saying here, where I'm going?
Yeah. So assuming taxable income, which is the sales on which the taxes are based. If that remains flat, just same as it is in the budget right now for FY27, a year from now.
Yeah.
We've, we've increased sales tax to 6% year round, right? Just assuming.
Yes.
We're still not going to be able to basically increase school funding back to its historical level, back to a small 3.4 million. Cause we've got $700,000 hole to fill.
Yes.
On school funding. We've got another $750,000 hole to fill. For our city, because we're taking that amount, three quarters of a million dollars out of our savings account this year.
Yes.
We're only increasing sales tax revenue, according to Nikki, by 1.3 million.
1.3.
So are we just going to be in a, we're still going to be in a hole, maybe a shallow?
It's a shot, you're, we're getting there. We've taken a step, but I do appreciate, now I remember.
Is that going to, are we still going to be, you know, dealing with these kinds of deficit challenges?
Well, they're there right now.
Sales tax.
But when, and I appreciate that Councilman Miller bringing up the other, you know, we've talked, I've got mark tag for, you know, the sin tax. But when we look at those things for the following year, you know, we need to begin that right now. And looking at, because there are sources out there. The other thing is I do believe we are not tapping into the foundations and state and federal grants to the level that we should be. So we've got to grow, and some of it we got to go fight for. Well, that's all right. Let's go fight for the money. But the revenue sources, there are some out there and just some examples. And these may seem like small things, but they're large things. You know, I receive where people want waivers for use of facilities and we do a lot of that. I mean, it's thousands upon thousands of dollars a year. You know, do we want to continue those kinds of things, which were revenues? But a lot have been waived over, you know, the years or at past the, the last three to five years. So even though that's a small thing, we've got to look at, for instance, charging for, you know, building permits. We have some, but then when we actually go out, we are not charging what we should be charging based on our fee schedule. So what I'm saying is there are revenue opportunities, but I want to say to, you know, this summer into August, okay, guys, here's what we have potential to go do. Some require referendums, some do not, some it's a code change. But, you know, how we, we're starting to dig out.
Right.
But this next, looking at our revenues and always looking at our cost. We find there's a service that we don't need to be doing and can reduce that or eliminate it, okay? If it doesn't have the impact we want. So it's a combo of what we do this next year, and I do believe we can do that. But it's, it's going to take putting the pencil to paper and our working with you guys as far as the priorities and with the public, you know, bringing them in and saying, you know, what's tolerable, you know? And I believe it can be done for 27. But again, we're making a stride, but there's still, there's still a couple of big holes out there. And I appreciate you saying with schools, you know, and the city of that designation of reserve.
The increased sales tax only gets us about two thirds out of the hole.
Correct.
We've got another probably 750,000 to a million dollars a year. And exemptions, we're going to have to remove new revenue sources that we're going to have to figure out in the next 12 months.
And the other, the other is, you mentioned it, and it is not a small thing. It's going to get some heartburn, I'm sure. But I'm, right now, you know, we're, we're going to be meeting with the assessors to look at the business and personal property. We are not receiving what we should be receiving based on my surveys and talking to auditors around the community. There's another chunk of money in a revenue that we need to look at. So I want to lay that. And again, I think Maggie and I have said it's the menu of what's available to us and is, are those directions you want to go in? But I, we need that happen quickly because there's timelines and deadlines. We've got to meet referendums or whatever it is. The others like the audit, we've got to do that. And the impact, Dan, if we do that audit this year and show, because right now self-reporting, we're going to step above that. It just keeps us all honest. Is that, that kicks in for 27. Is that right or am I wrong? If you increase the tax base with doing this audit, we're business and personal property. The impact of receiving those dollars would be in what fiscal year?
If we do it this year?
Yes.
Next year.
Okay.
FY27.
Yes. So there's another thing, you know, we're building and.
No, not FY27.
28. Hold on. That's why I asked.
Hold on. We're in FY26 right now.
Yep.
If we did it this year, it would still be. Right, because the taxes don't fall until July of fiscal year 2027, correct?
Yeah. So it hits that next fiscal year. Yeah. And that's what we're trying to achieve is that, you know, I know it's not, we just can't do it overnight, but this is a way to slowly dig out.
So will the changes that we kind of sort of agree on, those will be reflected in Monday's budget?
Yes.
So I think, I think that's why the city staff was kind of suggesting going to a 7% sales tax to try to meet the current budget in the future.
Correct. But getting down to the hole faster. And I mean, I have an appreciation for, there's our steps, you know, and we can't take baby steps. We got, I think, take some toddler steps to dig out of this. And, and we can, but it's, it's, it's going to take those additional revenues. And some of the things you brought up are, you know, I think doable and can be digested by the community. I've had some really good conversations and some hard. I've had some really good conversations and some hard conversations with people about it and what they like and don't like, and I appreciate that. I know you said you've had some. Um, it's, it's a mixed bag out there, you know, as far as, but once you talk about programs and things that like, I'm saying, what is, what is your priority? What's important, and that's what we've got to do this fall on our services and all, and ask everything to say what's important to you. And that gives you a roadmap by which to set priorities in the budget, and that makes this process easier. As far, it, it always has been for me for the last millennium.
Little bit of time.
Little bit of time, yeah. But, and I do want to say, I appreciate the council asking the questions. Um, you know, you get, uh, and then, of course, you know, Dan and I go in and, you know, it's easy for us, okay, do fifty of here, okay, Nikki, send us something, you know. But, um, you know, uh, all of our departments, but particularly with, um, Nikki, she's, um, and I know I've hit her seven days a week, but she's, and I, and I can't thank her enough, and I just have to do that. It's, it's every day, but the information she gives us is good information, and I can count on it, trust it. She knows, a few times, Dan and I are those that then go back to the council here and go, okay, is that right? And I'll say, well, seventeen thousand four hundred, and she said, well, it's seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine. Okay. So, um, but yeah, I think you, you've definitely given us direction, I appreciate you considering the six percent sales tax going up one, I will say. And, uh, now looking, uh, Dan and I a little farther into, uh, and I'm not selling you on it, I just want you to know, when you look at the average uh, amongst organizations, uh, be it boroughs, uh, cities, towns, whatever they are in Alaska, we are lower than those areas, I know, and I've had, well, that doesn't matter, I understand that. But I'm just saying, in the mix of things, we are on the lower end, which is a good thing. Now, even at six, we're still on that lower edge. So, um, you know, and you guys know what the appetite is out there for these things, you know, with sales tax. And it's, it's mixed, it's mixed.
Partly at the lower end because they don't have property tax, and some of it is, there's a number of reasons.
They don't pay for their schools.
They don't have to pay for their schools.
Yeah, and there's some questions I have on, I know like with alcohol sales, I, now that they figured, you know, who I am out on the street, then they tend to come up and go, hey, what about, but some good ideas, um, you know, about alcohol amounts of alcohol. Why, and they're asking a question of why, I appreciate the whys. And, um, to look at all those things, you know, this late summer and fall. But they can be revenue builders, so we can fund those community programs, but.
I think you're thinking of a backwards one. We're on the low end, not those communities.
Yes.
They charge more than us in sales tax.
In sales tax, yes.
And they don't pay for their schools. We charge less, and we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, yeah, but we also charge.
We have a property tax. Well, a lot of them have syntaxes and we don't.
It's a mixed bag. That's why I said it's a mixed bag.
And some of them have boroughs that they're part of where we don't have that supportive of borough.
Yeah. So, it's, it's hard to do, and I know, I, I think you've even looked, and Mark, you've looked, and I don't know others, but I know, uh, when you look at it, it's hard to do apples to apples because they're all different. But, you know, we've tried to figure out, so, okay, are we real out of whack? I don't think so. You know, and talking to some of the managers in these areas. Yeah, and they're, they're going through the same things we are.
So, back to the budget, come Monday, second reading. We should have the final budget approved, assuming there's no additional.
No other additionals or changes.
Is there any other changes we want administration to make to the budget for Monday? I'm pretty happy with where we're at right now. Well, everybody's unhappy, and that's usually decided, it's a reasonable agreement when nobody's happy. I think we are funding essential services, whether it's Nest or the preschool.
Where we are right now, I would say yes.
Good?
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have marching orders.
Unless there's any more comments, then everybody just wants to get out of here. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki. Thanks, Nikki, I call him the coke.
Thank you.
Thanks, see ya. See y'all in there.